The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Welcome to our budget work session today is Thursday, March 16th at 6:30 PM. Our first department or organization that we're going to be looking at is the Plainville Community Schools. So, Robert, did you want to have Maureen come up? And we've seen your presentation a couple, three times, so we're familiar. But I didn't know if there were any other things you'd like to say or begin with. You're welcome to.
Nothing really new to report other than obviously keep monitoring the state situation and working, as I mentioned previously, with the legislators to keep them informed about CAPS informations about how we're not happy about that budget, but we're waiting to hear anything definitive. But I'm certainly prepared tonight to answer any specific questions you have about the budget.
Okay. Robert, do you have anything you want to say or should we just go forward?
I have nothing.
Go forward.
What was the summary that was given at both the presentation and the [inaudible]?
Yep. So currently, the Board of Education is requesting a 1.95% operating budget increase. That remains the same. And your capital request is 370? 60? Let me get to it. 387? Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent or any of her support staff that's here tonight? Kevin's here for your technology.
Correct.
And Sam is your financial guy, okay? Any questions or concerns?
Sure.
Yes.
I do have a question. It's a very vague question, but other than the pension issue at the state level, because I'm hopeful that that's going to have no traction, and I think you are as well.
Absolutely.
But other than that, not, I have no questions about the budget that you've prepared here at the town level, but what concerns do you have at the state level other than the pension issue?
For Plainville, that really is the concern. We are doing all right on ECS, but that $2 million hit out of left field is something that no one could have seen coming or prepared for, as all of my colleagues across the state have told me. My, what I'm hearing from state folks, including Lieutenant Governor, is that doesn't seem like that can possibly go through, or they're talking about bonding it in some way, shape, or form at the state level. I just don't see it going through at that current level. I just don't. But getting, I guess the other concern I have is timing. I have, I have to let teachers know if they're going to have a non-renewal for May 1st. And, you know, if any of this has to be absorbed by the board in terms of the $2 million shortfall, there will be staff losses. So, I'm sort of in a bind that way as to how to proceed with that. And teachers are aware. There's chatter, you know, that the unions are chattering, and I think the more clarity I can give teachers right now, the better, because right now it's a very stressful environment for them. Because there's state statutes that govern when they have to be notified of any change in their status. So, that's a concern too, that this dragging on indefinitely will be very trying on teachers.
Okay. And even if you get beyond the, you know, the teacher's pension, you know, as late as today, they're discussing, you know, the change in the ECS formula that the governor proposed, and that there's a couple of, at least one that they talked about today where they were, they could have kept it where it's at right now and doing, you know, another evaluation and, you know, and implement it next year, that it's too soon to change. And then there's others that are, that are, you know, proposing that, you know, the ECS formula, you know, not be as proposed. So, you know, that, that could impact us going forward as well, and I'm not sure we're gonna, we're gonna know that definitively. You know, under the, you know, if you take out the teacher's pension payment, you know, Plainville actually had a slight increase in revenue as a result of, you know, all the rest of the, except probably, you know, I don't know how the...
Special education.
Well, yeah, some of the special education, but, but as well as, you know, some of the other, other grants that you get kind of off, you know, you know, not through the necessarily general fund.
Right. I mean, I've already taken into account the open choice $100,000 that I lost this year. Now it's out for next year. I'm not counting on it, and I've been told that was probably a good plan by my, you know, my information coming in from the state. Special Ed's another piece. You know, there's this new funding formula for special ed. It looks like it'll be okay, but we're recommending through CAPS that they take a year to study that and leave it alone for next year. So at least we know how to plan for it, because right now it's another thing that came out of left field with no real certainty as to what it looks like. So there is a bill before the legislator to put the brakes on that, form a task force of which I've already asked my special ed director to join if it's formed, so we have a seat at the table before decisions are made. So those are all those moving parts that Robert and I have talked about and are concerned about.
The appropriations committee is due to, you know, report out their proposed budget towards the end of April. You know, and in theory, the, the plan, you know, that, that budget would be negotiated at the governor's office. So I'm not sure we're gonna hear anything definitively till, till, you know, at least, at least hear something semi-definitively until towards the end of April, which, you know, puts us in an awkward position. But remembering, of course, that our, you know, our vote is on the expenditure side, not necessarily on the revenue side.
No, that's true, but I mean, that, that all was a good segue, I guess, from my first question, because, you know, until this past, well, until this current fiscal year, you know, we thought once we had a budget set, we were set, and then we had the ECS cut, then we had the open choice cut, and now everybody's on eggshells and, you know, and I'm sure that you're, you're keeping that in the back of your mind. Going forward with, you know, with this coming year, we think we know what we're looking at, even if, you know, even if we go on the assumption that the pension benefit is, is out of the picture altogether, we, I don't think any of us can really have any faith with whatever we're told from the state level. Forget the timing issue, the mill rate set. After the mill rate's set, then they tell us what we're gonna get for revenue, and we have to sort of backpedal and figure out what we're gonna do there. But it's that unknown.
I agree.
And then, you know, we have a town that we're trying to take care of with a whole host of other services. So, you know, have you started to, to work with the board and Sam and formulate a plan for, I mean, the $100,000 reductions, I mean, those are relatively minor and you adapted well to those. But have you started to formulate a plan for, you know, if we had more of those? And I'm not asking you to answer specifics, I'm just saying, are you starting to think, you know, what would you do if we had more, you know, more reductions in the same?
It could be full party if we had to. But, you know, I don't feel I have a firm plan of any way, shape, or form, but obviously I've thought about it, generalities about what it could mean, hence my original discussion earlier about teachers. And, you know, if, if the worst were to come to pass, I would have to put teachers on notice about possible job losses.
And I have a question, Dr. Rummitt, regarding the teachers, because I can understand the anxiety that's out there in every school system. How many total employees does the Board of Education have in total?
About 200.
200?
200 certified and another...
No, total employees, everybody that works for the Board of Education.
About 400.
428.
428.
426, somewhere in there. 426 or thereabout, that's close enough. And of that, 426, how many are teachers? Did you say two?
227, 225 college.
So that's about half.
A little more than half.
So, if something did happen, and we all, none of us know what that might be, would you be thinking in other terms of staffing changes rather than going to teachers first as your first option, looking at some other staffing positions that may not impact student learning directly, because the teachers are directly related to student learning? I know everybody that works for the organization is involved, but direct classroom teaching, is that an option for you to look at those folks? Would everybody, everybody be on the table, not just the teachers?
I think they would all have to be. Support staff, tutors, paras.
Uh huh.
Going into this budget, I already cut an office professional. I don't think I could do much with custodians, but I, I would have to look maybe at support staff with the parameters of special ed too, because some of those support staff are mandated in IEPs, but those that are not could potentially be looked at.
Okay. All right. I just, you know, to try and relieve some of the anxiety, and perhaps it's creating more anxiety for other people, which is also unfair, and nobody wants any of that to happen, but just thinking in a different way if something should happen.
Yes, you know, my goal is not to frighten folks.
Right.
But through the, the media and other channels, probably their own state-level union folks, you know, there's been words out that if districts had to absorb these huge TRB issues, that there's just, there's gonna be significant impact to programs.
Uh huh.
There's just no way around that.
Right. As you got through this, I'm also going to ask not just the council to look at the town's capital, but the board's capital as well. So we may be, I can't say 100% what's gonna happen with that, but just in awareness, there may be some changes to capital as well. Everything has to be looked at with a close scrutiny and trying to decide, it's gonna impact no matter what we do, but how can we try to lessen some of this impact to not just the schools and the town operations, but the taxpayers that are gonna support this budget as well?
I did, Mr. Ross and I have met ongoing, of course, about technology, and he did prepare summary for the town council about the age of all of our computers. That probably isn't something that I hit specifically during my many budget presentations, so if the council would like that information, he's prepared enough copies for everybody.
That'd be most helpful. I appreciate you did that. Thank you.
I know with regard to the capital budget, we put some funding this year into elementary, and Kevin and I discussed that, you know, elementary has not gotten a lot of the technology benefit. We really focus on middle and high, because that's where our Chromebook initiative started.
Or one short.
Sorry, could you just start again? We were shuffling papers.
Thank you, Kevin. So I know this year is never a good year to add anything, however, the Chromebooks at the elementary are all hand-me-downs, so they are all past their useful life. I did mention in my presentations that third graders have to take statewide tests, and without having ready access to Chromebooks, they're spending a lot of time cycling through. The other thing we haven't done is we've kind of obsoleted our, our computer labs. It's no longer that the kids march to the computer lab for lessons. We diverted funds away from computer labs to fund the Chromebooks, so we've, you know, removed a lot of computer labs at the secondary level, and we've done similar things at the elementary level. So what's left in there is pretty old, but we feel a better use of the resources is the Chromebooks. So with Kevin's help and support, we've looked at how to do that very purposefully, but, you know, a lot of our computer labs are either nonexistent or pretty, pretty old. But at, to benefit the Chromebook initiative that we feel is absolutely best for our children. So again, the, this chart that I just asked Kevin to pass out shows you the age of our labs versus, and some of the classroom desktops that again are kind of fading into the sunset. And really, the Chromebooks are where we're looking to put our, our resources, and their useful life is about four years, which they'll, many of them will become four years old at the end of the school year, specifically at the elementary level as well. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Kevin, with regard to Chromebook initiative or how we're making decisions in that regard?
We've, we've made investments in the middle school and high school by diverting the monies that we had for the Chromebooks and the one-on-one initiative. If you look at the high school, we have four labs there. Only three of them have recently been updated, and the fourth one actually will be sunset at the end of this year, so we'll be down to three labs. There were nine labs in the district, in the high school alone when we renovated the building. So we're changing the structure. Middle school, you'll notice, there are no labs, other than the technology, those are in the tech ed, they're, they're specific labs. And then the three elementaries, you know, the newest being, it'll be eight years old at the end of this school year, the remaining are, will be nine years old, you know. We've retired, these machines are all the machines that can still be upgraded as of the beginning of school. We have 540 devices we pulled out of service this summer because they no longer can be upgraded. So there were no more security patches for them, we couldn't run the new browsers, we couldn't run any of the things, and it was causing, you know, our system, our software that we had not to run. So, you know, we didn't want to put good money towards them anymore, either with batteries and other things. So we've, we've, those are, those were sunset. I think we've not put a lot of money into the elementary level, that's why there's a focus, and we've gotten very lucky this year, because this was actually a scheduled year for three grade levels at, you can notice there's, Dell replaced quotes there.
Under PHS.
MSP and PHS. What happened was we had, we bought three grade levels a year too, and Dell took them back, they were defective. We got brand-new ones in April. So that basically gave us a free year, and that free year we're trying to apply this year towards the elementary level for their Chromebooks, to give them some, you know, new machines. In that four years of we've been doing this, the only thing we've purchased directly for the elementary level has been a set of iPads at each school. So, you'll also notice that our staff laptops at the middle school, the ones that are scheduled to be replaced are finishing their fifth year. Those machines aren't going to be retired, those will be used to augment some of the classroom machines that you notice are seven years old or more. We're gonna put those in the upper grades and kindergartens, wherever you need it more. If you have specialists who need a machine, those are where those will go. So we continue to use those machines until basically their end of life. I think we've, you know, done as good a job as we can to get as much use out of these machines as possible that is still usable.
Good question.
Yes.
Sure.
For demo purposes, I brought what the four-year-old Chromebook looks like. This is what I have left in storage. There's no screens. We stole all the screens to replace them. Most of the trackpads no longer work, can't hear this one. This one actually does luckily, here in the black. These don't. And now we're buying mice for the kids, when they're doing testing, because they can't, the testing is highlighting. I don't know if you've tried to highlight text with, you know, trying to use a two-finger motion here? You know, these are third graders, they're gonna be trying. We bought, you know, 160 mice so that we had enough for kids for testing going forward. You know, that's what we're getting at with these devices, so. And in October also of 2017, Google stopped supporting this device. And that's, you know, they are no longer updating this one, they've actually given the life data. So it's one of the earliest, these are one of the first Chromebooks. This is what made the, what we call the Chromebook revolution in education, is these, this device here. It was a great device for 275, or just under $300 at the time, but they are, you know, somewhat flexible, so.
Part of our budget this year is better protection for the Chromebooks.
Yes, new cases.
And just to reiterate, all children in grades three through eight have to take state tests on some sort of technology device, whether it's a laptop, or an iPad, or a Chromebook. Then all 10th graders have to take a science test, and all 11th graders take the SAT. The SAT, I believe, is still pencil paper, but they're moving in that direction, but certainly the S-Back that we've talked about, smarter balanced, has to be all on electronic devices. So, it just puts us in that bind, and like Kevin said, there's certain functions they have to have to highlight it, it's part of the reading component that are, you know, can only be done on certain devices, you can't do that on a iPad.
Not buying keyboards and...
Correct, yeah. Anyway.
A question, Kevin. At the, at the high school level, do you, do you see that you would be retaining labs just for the specialized areas?
Yeah.
And art, because of specialized software?
So art, yeah, they do the Illustrator.
Right.
They do a design course that's all, that's all computer-based, but it's very strong. We have a teacher who basically teaches, you know, most of his art classes are in there. The STEM lab being the engineering CAD lab is also used by some other areas, and then the COM lab, which is Dave Gagnard's lab, where he do communication and video editing and print design and things like that. So it's really the business lab, which we can use Chromebooks for most of the spreadsheets and other species that they're doing, they can do it there, so.
So those would be the labs that, you know, the board would be probably continuing to support for at least, of course, who knows how the technology may change in five or six years, but at least for the foreseeable future, you would be continuing to support those labs, those types of labs, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions?
Just out of curiosity, what, like, the line item for the Chromebooks for three through five, I mean, how many Chromebooks are we talking about that you just mentioned a number of?
It was about 550.
550? I'm just curious what they cost, that's all.
Yeah. But just, I think we budgeted 275 to 300, I think.
Yeah, so they're still fairly, compared to our regular computer.
Yeah, and we're getting, they're better built, and they're, we're getting at least three years, that's the plan on those, three to four years, they're in better shape. But again, the ones, these will last, that we're getting, will last probably four years easily, because they're gonna be parts, they're not going home with the kids. The ones that go home with the kids every day in their backpack, you know, 85 to or so percent come back in pretty good shape. But, you know, kids, you know, in middle school, kids is a little less, in high school, kids a little more, but we rework them and we give them back to them, but, you know, if they throw their backpack down, even if it's in a case, or they have a bunch of books still, and they sit on the books, or they, you know, they kick it around or something, and, you know, we find it. So, you know, we've been really good about the repairs, and we have not used actually any board funding or town funding to any of the repairs. We've done that through the voluntary insurance fund, and then kids, if they've broken them and didn't have the insurance, they have to pay in, and that money goes back into that fund. So basically, it's self-sustaining. So the dollars and figures that you see for these devices over the years have not, we've used no repair budget for that. So that's why our repair budgets have stayed relatively flat. We've using it because a lot of our other equipment is getting, you know, older, so.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments for the board? Thank you again for all of your explanation, and I know that you've done this several times, and we appreciate it every time. And most, most especially, thanks for this information about your technology program. That's something we didn't have before, and certainly will be helpful, so, thanks, thank you very much.
If you need anything else as you're making decisions, we'll be happy to come back.
Okay. Thank you again.
Before we move on to revenues, we just want to quickly go over the Robertson Airport budget. We, for some reason, we didn't have that on our list, it is a relatively simple budget.
Okay.
That would be on J15. Budget is recommended, total's $90,000. That's $100 less than the current fiscal year, minus 0.11%. This is an enterprise budget that's, that's funded through revenues received for, from the fixed base operator for our contract with, with them. We are budgeting on, on J16. We would receive in revenue next year, $194,477, which means we're, we're budgeting a $104,000 surplus in this particular budget. We've done pretty good over the last couple of years. I think our fund balance, according to our latest Robertson Airport Fund, is in the $360,000 range. So that positions us well for some future projects at the airport, which, which could include repaving of the taxiway, some apron work. The, the Aviation Commission is, is looking at using some funds that are left, left over through the, through the discretionary funding that Connecticut Airport's received through the state DOT. We've built up a certain amount of, of balance in that, but we can't build it up more than three years, and so what the, the commission is looking, looking to do is, is to perhaps take those dollars, combine it with some other fund, you know, unassigned fund balance that they built up to do a little bit more than, than what was necessary. That's in the apron area, which you may recall is where the popcorn is, and that, you know, that, over, over years, that stuff comes loose when there's, when the propellers are going. So it's not, it's not the most safest situation there.
And Mr. Lee, that, that's funded 100% through us, or do we get help through FAA or state or anything like that, for apron repairs and runways?
Yes, the discretionary funding, we've, we've built up somewhere around $400,000 in that account, so.
So that's what that...
That's, yes.
Okay.
We may supplement that with another, you know, $100,000 or $200,000 to, you know, to make it a little bit larger project.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding airport funding?
Do we need to, we need to approve the expenditure?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair? Motion to approve 6,200 Robertson Airport in the amount of $90,000.
Second. Motion in a second? Any discussion?
Just one thing I neglected to point out, $74,000 of the $90,000 is what we call pilot and taxes. Basically, it's the taxes that were paid previous to the town purchasing the airport, and we just calculate that right. So the town did not lose the tax revenue as a result of the town purchasing and owning it, that, you know, through the airport fund, we've funneled back what would have been the taxes back into the general fund. So that makes up the great majority of the $90,000, really paying the town back for the lost taxes.
We calculate the taxes, and if they're coming from private entity before we purchased it, so it's the same thing, it just comes back to us, miscellaneous revenue, it's on the general fund versus property taxes, you know, tax.
Any other questions or concerns? Fallows in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right. Our intent at this point in time was to go through the revenue side of the budget.
Okay.
Revenue tab, just tab A, H, A3. Bob, you did most of these estimates, do you want to just review them for the council?
Yes.
We reviewed them together, but give him a little chance to...
Yes. But as, as you know, these are still estimates at this, this point in time, we could, you know, we're still sharpening the pencil and, you know, looking at all of these. But I, obviously, you know, the components of what's here, taxes being the final piece that's filled in after everything else is kind of solidified. What we've done is, you know, our license and permits, you know, we're bumping, we've bumped them up a little bit over the last few years. You know, we may still have a little room, that's one of the things I may sharpen my pencil on as your process evolves. Right now, I'm leaving it at about $275,000 for building permits. This year, they're not coming in as high as they were last year, but again, we're starting the construction season, so we'll see how that goes. So again, it's at this point in time, I'm estimating, to keep it at 275,000. Fines and fees, these are all the, the smaller fees, you know, senior center, planning and zoning, recording, there's not really a lot there, not really a lot of wood over, so what we're budgeting is, is very close to what we had budgeted this current year. I think I increased, I increased trash container fees by 500 bucks, so not really a lot of change in that area at this point. Use of money, investment income, you know, that, we may have a little room, but right now, the way our investments are coming in this year, we're right on target to where we've re-increased. coming in this year, we're at a target to where we increased the budget this year, I believe to forty thousand from twenty-five. We actually did a little bit better in two thousand and sixteen, some of the longer-term investments had a better return than we thought with the Fed's increasing interest rates this week.
Uh huh.
You know, it's possible we may get a little more, but, you know, again, it's not really a lot. But that is one item I'm looking at in addition to the building permits that we can sharpen up going forward. The next area is the intergovernmental revenue, and this is obviously the biggest area of our concern at this point in time. The numbers you see there are the numbers that we were proposed by the governor at this point in time, okay? And like Robert said, you know, there's still discussion as late as today that the ECS could change again too. So, you know, estimate probably isn't even a strong enough word at this point in time. And you can see that the bottom line for this area is almost twelve million dollars. So, you know, almost, you know, twenty to twenty-five percent of our revenue is sitting right there. The other areas are the miscellaneous. Convent's tax, that's the tax that's paid by property owners who transfer property, sales, purchases, things like that. Housing Authority pilot, that's, you know, an agreement that was set in place a long time ago, and that's the money that comes to us from the Housing Authority quarterly. That amount is pretty much right in line and varies based on their couple of parameters they have. But it's pretty, it's pretty, it's in pretty good shape. The miscellaneous, we bumped that up last year. Miscellaneous includes the Robertson Airport, seventy-four thousand that we just saw in the airport fund. It includes all the cell towers, what we have coming in from that. We have had some decommissioned cell towers due to solidation of cell tower companies. And we, one of them was the electricity that we received on twenty-five dollars a month, that's gone. Those were the decommissioned items. But we're still generating close to, you know, about eighty-four thousand dollars a year, a little less than that, from our cell tower. We also have other things that go through there. You know, the rent for the Chamber of Commerce, not too much, a couple of grand. You know, miscellaneous things, copies that are made, fifty cents a page in the town clerk's office or anywhere else. We have some recycling rebates. This is the Murphy Road recycling rebates. We get about twelve thousand dollars a year on that. And then just miscellaneous, we estimate ten thousand dollars just in estimated, you know, estimated fees. A hot dog cart, two hundred bucks a month or a hundred, a hundred dollars a month, two hundred, two hundred dollars a month, something like that. You know, so all of that equals about a hundred and eighty thousand for the year. Past few years, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of things that we just simply can't budget because we don't know. For example, the, in this year, we, I'm sorry, last year, sixteen, the EverSource rebate for the LED light, Covanta, the equity distributions we've had from, sorry, BRRFOT, not Covanta. Covanta took over. So, you know, those have helped us. We don't know what those numbers are until after our budget process, majority of the time, so we can't budget for them. They come in, they go into this line item, and that falls right to fund balance. That's, you know, essentially a bonus, a gain, if you will. The last area is our sundry inter-fund transfers in. That's the biggest one there is the inter-fund transfer in from the sewer department. That's the sewer department's charge, if you will, for all the payroll taxes, cost of benefits, things like that, okay? That goes up two percent as the salary. So, you know, whatever, benefits go up, salaries, like pension, things like that, that's what we do. So essentially, the sewer department is a separate self-sustaining entity, therefore the expenses on their books, the revenue is paid back to us because we pay out all those costs upfront as we go along, and it comes back to us over time. The balancing component there is the use of fund balance. That's the dollar a month of two hundred thousand that you've allocated, I guess, over the last few years now. That helps offset the mill, helps offset the mill rate increase. And all of that balances our budget at this point in time. The bottom line. What I've done so far as well with regards to taxes is, you know, we've done a really, really good job in collecting our prior taxes. Last few years, we've been well above our budget. This year, I'm estimating again, we're going to go above our budget through our diligence and collecting and sending out delinquent notices in a more timely fashion that doesn't get people pegged. Our tax sales, things like that. So I have bumped up for now the prior tax line by twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, if we collect all of our prior taxes, our one end will be zero. So there is a caution in that. I don't want to bump it too much because if we collect it all, we don't have any budget at all. So I've also bumped up the interest. Again, it's the same concept. People don't pay their taxes, we charge it. So we collect it all, we have no interest. So I'm bumping it up a little bit, twenty-five thousand, but, I mean, that fifty thousand dollars between those two line items does help, you know, everything else, so, you know, we're monitoring. As I said, at this point in time, these are our best estimates for all these line items taken as a whole, and we will continue to adjust and sharpen our pencils as your process evolves. And once we have a bottom line of financial figure, we can finalize revenue figures.
One thing that's a little bit tricky for us this year, and we're not quite sure how to present it at this point in time, is that the current statutes read that the car taxes for fiscal year seventeen need to be capped at thirty-seven mils, meaning that anybody, anybody who had car taxes over thirty-seven mils needed to back it down to thirty-seven, the state would reimburse them for the lost revenue. The way the statute stands this year is that those people at thirty-seven need to cap their taxes, they need to bring it down to thirty-two, and the state will make up the difference. Making up the difference is about a hundred and thirty million dollars. Plainville's current mill rate is thirty-one point nine nine. If there is an increase in our mill rate, we're going to go over thirty-two. We're going to have to cap the motor vehicle, under current legislation, we're going to have to cap our motor vehicle mill rate at thirty-two. However, the way the statute's written, we're not going to get reimbursed for any of the lost revenue, you know, as a result, as a result of capping it at thirty-two. So I think that when the state's taking a look at, you know, where they can save money, one of the easiest ways for them to save a hundred and thirty million dollars is not to bring it from thirty-seven to thirty-two. You know, or they could bring it to thirty-two and just say, we're not going to reimburse you for the, for the hundred and thirty million. So, you know, I'm not sure that they're going to, you know, push that back on the towns, but, you know, for us, I don't, I don't think it'll make a, you know, we could tell you what the average increase will be by blending the motor vehicle and the, you know, and the personal property and the, and the real estate, you know, how it's split up, you know, we're just going to have to do that, you know, logistically, when you go to set the, you know, when you're getting ready to set the mill rate, you know, your expenditures are, you know, we will, you know, do a calculation that tells you, you know, if the mill rate's at thirty-two, you're going to have to set the property tax rate slightly higher than what you otherwise would have to make up for some of that lost revenue. There's also still on the books, or at least proposed, and I'm not sure that it's been approved yet, that all personal property, they want to eliminate small businesses that have personal property less than ten thousand dollars, I think it was.
Yes.
And, you know, that's going to have a slight, slight impact on our, you know, on our loss of revenue. It's kind of a pain to collect all the information and to do the administration as it relates to it, but, you know, it's not as if, if we don't do it, we're going to then take those hours and, and, you know, and lay somebody off, you know, so we're not going to save any money from our end if, by not collecting it. You know, our expenses will still be there. Maybe we can take, you know, the time and effort that we spend on those small items and apply them to back taxes, you know, or something along those lines, so we may be able to, you know, refocus our efforts, you know, elsewhere that might, you know, benefit us. But it's unclear as to whether that's going to, you know, make it through the process. So there are a lot of moving pieces. The big moving piece, of course, is what's going to happen with state aid as it relates to the teachers, you know, and the requirement on the teacher's pension. But there are some other small, you know, moving pieces as well, including the car tax cap, including the potential elimination of, you know, personal property taxes for small businesses. Not to confuse you more, but.
The personal property tax exemption was on the books for this year, and it didn't pass. So they're trying to get it back again, and that difference, I think, was seventy thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for us last year for this current fiscal year, if it went through.
That'd be a loss of revenue.
That'd be a loss of revenue. So with another year of grand list and a revow, you know, probably going to be right around there too, if it passes.
Only the state of Connecticut will reduce, you know, revenue, you know, take credit for helping small businesses at the expense of small towns.
Mm-hmm.
We lowered business taxes, but, oh, by the way, the town, you know, you're going to have to raise your other taxes in order to make up for that difference on the residential and, you know, and on the car, car side. Oh, wait a second, we capped cars at thirty-two, so if you're over, you know, we're not going to fund you for, for that. We're, you know, it's getting tired.
You know, if at least they would just do their budget before we did ours, it'd make it a lot easier. They would take care of the budget, I should say. Why that's not part of the state statute.
Their solution is, let's give the towns the ability to delay doing their budget till we do ours, you know.
Wasn't there some talk about that at the Capitol?
Oh, they're still talking about it.
Letting people, the towns off the hook for meeting those deadlines?
The Senate, yeah, the Senate voted it down, or didn't vote on it, well, it's in.
Yeah, I don't think they.
They didn't vote on it, yeah, they didn't vote on it, yeah.
Problem is our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, though.
Right.
So, I mean, delaying it just delays us getting tax bills out, which delays getting us.
Then you have to send supplemental bills out?
Yeah, yeah. They don't have to send out tax bills, so they can go, doesn't matter.
Unless there's some indication earlier than that, that the teacher pension thing is off the table, you know, but I don't know if that's going to happen either, so none of us know.
I think we'll get a pretty good sense of where they may be going with, with the appropriations comes out with their, you know, I think it'll be, you know, there'll be less unknowns at that point in time.
Somewhere I read or heard that, you know, at some point, could it be definite that it's just not on the table, you know? But that was.
Nothing definitive.
Just talk, you know, so.
No?
I don't think I've heard a legislator supporting it yet.
You know, I was thinking that. I haven't heard any from either side of the aisle say they support it, so.
Can that still happen if nobody, can the governor still?
No.
If they, if both houses say no, it's no.
That's correct.
No means no, yeah.
Well, they still have a problem, though, you know, I mean, saying no is okay, but how do you fix that? It's going to be.
Right.
Increase in taxes in some other way, whether it's income, sales, whatever, air, I don't know.
Or some sleight of hand.
Okay.
Oh, there'll be a lot of sleight of hand.
If it passes, any indication.
But like Robert said, the appropriations may give us some, some clue about where it may go.
Yeah.
They come up with their version.
All right. Well, should we carry on with, do we have to do anything with the revenue? Did we, no, that's not.
No, that'll be done when you set the mill rate.
Mill rate, okay.
We'll keep you posted as changes we may make to this, what you see in front of you, based on what we.
Okay. Shall we go back through the accounts that we left open items on next and see if we can get some decisions on those? I wrote them down, and I don't, they're sort of in an order of C, E, F, and J, so maybe we'll try that. One thirty-six accounts was on C twenty-seven. And if I skip some, Rob, I'm sure you'll let me know.
Yeah, I hope, yeah.
Okay. Okay. The postponing of approving this the other night was discussing the part-time clerk for the financial, for the business office, the financial office, and we didn't, we didn't approve that, so. Are there any thoughts on this position or on approving it or not approving it, or?
Madam Chair, it's a quick question. Rob, what's, what are the hours for this person you're asking?
The number you see in front of you is, excuse me, for nineteen hours a week. And it would really depend on the hire, you know, I would be flexible in saying five hours a day, four hours a day, or three days a week, whatever. You know, as long as I can get what I need done out of the individual, I don't mind if it's five days or three days, I'd really work with the individual. I'm looking more for quality than somebody here.
What does that come out, per hour, whatever it is? I don't have a calculator in front of me. Hold on a second.
I, I, I average fifteen dollars an hour. For fifty-two weeks.
Yep.
And that, that amount is a estimate based on the union contract, the lowest position of that caliber had at any point in time.
It would not be a union position, though, just to.
Right. Now, this individual, this position you're looking for, is this something that you want to keep on forever, or is this something to utilize this person for special projects or something to alleviate your, your workload?
No, it's not a special project type position. It'll be something that would probably, would take the sustained, you know, heat.
Permanent.
Simply because it, again, I envisioned it doing, doing a lot of the day-to-day work myself and Sam in the Board of that Office, Chad in my office, so that we can do the bigger projects to look at closer some of the things such as the budget or for the wanted purposes to get things tightened up, to, to, you know, look at purchasing a little, a little more combined with the Board of that, if you will. Having Chad go out and make sure that all the departments that are doing things that we do on the system, day in and day out, are doing them all the same way. Best practices kind of thing, internal controls, structure, design, strengthening, if you will, okay? As we spread things out to departments, things get looser and things fall between the cracks. We don't have the time because of all the day-to-day stuff we're doing, tighten that back up. And, you know, I think weaknesses come about because of that. And I don't, I don't like to have any weaknesses in our systems, our designs, whether that's, you know, paper trails or computer trails or water trails, whatever we need, however we need it, you know, it's an area that things could fall through the cracks if we don't monitor it a little bit better. So this person would do the day-to-day, some of the day-to-day things that, you know, that I do myself. I mean, again, my staff, my full-time staff was a person and a half larger than it is now when I first started here. So all of those duties, or the majority of them, have, I've taken on. Chad's taken on some. Computer technology has eliminated some of that, but at the same time, there are additional processes that we do day in and day out that we're not, that I did not do when I first got here, because staff is doing. This person would kind of take some of those back and allow me to do some of the bigger picture items. And Sam as well is supportive, now the Board of that.
Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Anybody else?
Rob, who's actually going to oversee this person? Okay. When we were talking the other night, you specifically mentioned that part of the responsibilities of this person would involve purchasing.
No, 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 not personally. I would have Chad, myself and Sam be, do the purchasing, but.
Okay.
Because we're, you know, right now, Chad does very well, as you know, with.
Yes.
Vendors up and.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. No, he would, no, he would still do that, but I would take some of the things that he does day in and day out, maybe away from him, have him concentrate more on that, if you will, because he does do a good job of it. You know, but at the same time, we also have processes and checks and everything that have to get out, so maybe some of the day-to-day input, just data entry, if you will, this person can do on his, instead of him doing, and he can concentrate on a lot of things too. You know, he's, he's doing all the bank reconciliations, the majority of them that we have on both sides, Town and Board of that. You know, that takes away from his day-to-day stuff, and it sometimes gets pushed off depending on the volume, where we are on time of year. You know, those are things that we can't do. So sometimes we're two, three months behind in doing some of these things because of day-to-day stuff. So again, it's going to kind of be depending on the person who sits in the chair, you know, what we can give them, how qualified they are, kind of evolve over time.
And some of these tasks, do they tie back to the? And some of these tasks, do they tie back to the audit?
Everything ties back to the audit, that's, that's what I'm saying, every, every keystroke we do, every dotting the minis across the key, everything goes back to the audit. And, and, you know, I think we have a good, you know, we're, we're not in bad shape audit-wise, but I don't like to have any management letter comments negative at all, period. And, and, you know, we have had some over the last few years, and I think it's, I think it's kind of an evolutionary thing that we've been kind of overwhelmed, that we've taken it on. We kind of catch up at certain times of the year, if, if possible, sometimes it's not possible. And the bigger concern of mine is that things are falling through the cracks that we can't see or don't have time to see. It's my hope, anyway, that this person will allow us to shore these things up.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I don't know if I can, you know, I don't think there's a, like, in my opinion, a problem with this position. Is there any way, in general, because I think it's just like the buildings and grounds position, say the state decided to shore us a lot of money, you know. If, if the state say the way we have it in our book now, I would have no problem with it, is there any way to say, you know, not necessarily hire this person if the state went negative for us?
You mean to okay it pending?
Yeah, I mean, is that, I don't know if that's, is that actually worth, I guess.
What you're kind of thinking, is saying, yeah, it's a good idea, but if anything goes sideways?
Yeah, that, that's, be the only thing.
Can't do it?
I mean.
You have to define sideways.
Well, one point nine million dollars would be.
Okay, how about one point five?
That's it, that would be it for me.
No, I'm not serious, that's where I think you get into trouble when you make.
Well, I think if you, I think if you, if you included any expenditures that were approved on, let's assume that the budget's approved on April twenty-fifth. You know, when July first rolls around, we will say to the council, is it okay if we hire that person for fifteen thousand dollars? They know, then we're not gonna do it.
And the fact that we accepted it as part of the budget will not make, make any difference.
I mean, the appropriations there, we just won't spend the fifteen thousand.
There's nothing they can say, no, you're just gonna like.
Do you wanna wait till the state budget is approved?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say the state budget, that's all, I wouldn't have, I don't think you'd have to wait till, I don't know how long it would take.
Yeah, if they were to cut us in good conscience, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hire the position.
Yeah.
If you're treading water to that extent we can, but I wouldn't.
The other option is not, is not to fund it, but do an additional appropriation.
Oh, after the fact?
After the fact, and, but that would require that you go to at least pay the first year and unassign fund balance.
Which is not a huge amount, I mean, fifty thousand is not.
Well, I'd rather put it in front of the voters and, and have them approve it, but just hold off until, until the state budget's approved.
Like I said, I mean, I think it's a, it definitely sounds like it's a good idea to have this person.
Madam Chair, I'll just, I'll throw another option, is just funding it for half the year with the understanding that next fiscal year will fund the other half to complete the, you know. You know, and I'm looking at some of these unfinished departments, you know, the same way with HVAC, you know, I don't, I know, to me, these are all kind of in the same position, so, you know, I have questions about the loader for the roadways department, which, not that I'm looking to eliminate it, because I know if we eliminate it, there are other capital items we certainly can use the money for, but, you know, the same with the utility truck at the sewer, I have some issues with the fact that we've, I don't wanna say jerry-rig, that's probably too strong of a word, but we have a utility truck that's got a crane that we know was not meant to have a crane, and now we're having axle problems and God forbid we have some kind of accident, and, you know, so, you know, from, you know, and I don't know, there is a hesitation on my part with what the state is going to do, but maybe, like we said, is whether we leave it in there and, and wait for the state to complete their, their process works for me, or do we want to look to fund some of these things that we decide to fund for six months, you know, and that at least gets us out towards January, where we'll have probably a better idea where the state is regardless of, of what goes on. So I, I just wanna throw that out there as another option.
That's, that is another way to go. I, we all think the same way, I won't speak for anybody else but myself, and, you know, the concern is what the pending doom will be, and we don't know what that is. I have a serious feeling something's gonna happen. We may not get the whole amount, you know, obligated to our town, but I believe where there's gonna be some impact to our town. So adding positions or, as, as in the other department, not taking a position out that had been sort of unfilled for a couple of years, it's a hard thing. If this were not, if that was not the case, these would be not a problem, and they would be going in fifteen thousand dollars in terms of our entire budget, it's not going to make one bit of difference one way or the other, but it's the concept of adding or not deleting them. I, I would probably, I will, I, I'm amenable to either way, either funding it for half a year or putting it in the budget, and if things really do go in a direction that's going to be a significant negative impact on the taxpayers and the town, then I would ask you not to fill it. And we should know that, we should know by July. I mean, don't they have to finish up by June thirtieth, or, or do they give themselves more time?
Unless they change the rules.
More time?
They have to finish by, by, I think.
They do unless they decide not to.
June sixth, but they, they could call a special session just to do the budget, they've done that in the past, so, you know. But, you know, whether the hiring is July first, August first, or September first, you know.
Right.
If you wanna wait till the state budget is done, or at least we know where, where it's heading, you know, hopefully it's done by June sixth, but if not, then we would wait until it's done, or until you tell us otherwise.
Yep. So what, what's the consensus, six months or fund it and then depending on the outcome of what we're going to look at?
Well, can I, can I say something else before we even talk about that?
Yes.
Because, you know, we've been talking so far about the TRB, which was, you know, just over four hundred million dollars, but we have, you know, the seven hundred million dollar give-back that, you know, the governor is looking for from the state employees, which anybody who's realistic knows that's not gonna happen. And we have to be prepared, we're gonna eat part of that as well. So if the, if the TRB doesn't come back to us, they have to fill that four hundred million dollar hole, there's the other seven hundred million dollar hole, somehow something's coming back to us. I mean, we're gonna get a reduction somewhere. And, you know, I, I don't wanna be doom and gloom, because I think we have a good budget here for our town, and if we didn't have to worry about the state, I think Plainville would be in very good shape.
So how do you feel about these positions? What, which way do you wanna go, half of a year, full year?
I, I just soon give Rob the full year, and, and I take him at his word, that he won't, he won't fill it if the state implodes on us. I just soon give him what he needs. I, I'd say the same thing to Dave Emery, he needs a position, he needs a position. He seemed to justify it, and I'm fine with it.
Well, Dave's isn't an increase to the budget, right? It's a, you took it out, so it was lowering that number, but it's not increasing last year's number, right?
It would increase, well, it would increase the proposed budget that's in place right now.
Correct.
But it's not an increase over last year, it's, that position has been in there, but unfilled, so that, those dollars are in there.
Just to, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, two years ago, that employee got injured, it was on workers' comp for, you know, a year and a half, until, you know, it was determined that the person could no longer work, you know, work in that position, and so, you know, we couldn't fill the position behind the person, because we didn't know if they were coming back or not. So when the person, you know, retired, we, you know, then, then the position became open. They did advertise to fill the position, you know, and then, and then we, you know, had the governor's budget come out, and that's what, at that point in time, I told him to stop the process.
Okay.
So it has been funded through the end of this year. I just, you know, it's not an unfilled position until just, you know, just recently, maybe, you know, the beginning of this year, its calendar year. Because the person wasn't, you know, the person started the job till about the beginning of this year.
But in the number you proposed to the council, you took it, you took it out?
Yes.
And so we, so we would need to put it back in?
Yes.
That's all I'm saying.
Yep. Yep.
And, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to any of that, we, you know, we need to do what we need to do, I'm just saying, we, we have to be realistic, you know, if we talk to our state rep, we talk to our state senator, if you look at what's in the news, if you listen to what's coming out of Hartford, none of it's good. What they're predicting for next year is even worse than what they're doing this year, and that's, and that's above TRB. And if you listen to the superintendent, they have to address TRB one way or the other, whether they find a way to bond it, and then they're gonna feed that to us, it might be in smaller bites over a longer period of time, but we're gonna have to absorb that at some point as well. And, and that's maybe a better way to do it, if they had said, we're gonna introduce it, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna slowly introduce it to the towns, so that it's not, you know, so abrupt to our budget, it might not have been so hard to take this year. And we might have been able to absorb it over a period of five years or something, and then run with it from there. But one way or the other, these things are gonna become our problem, and therefore our taxpayers' problem, and we just have to keep that in mind. And, and outside of all of that, we have a really good budget. We have a good budget for our town, our services are, you know, everything would be great if we just looked at Plainville. So I wanna give Rob what he needs, I wanna give Dave what he needs, I wanna give Dominic what he needs, et cetera, and I think we could do all of that without, you know, really overburdening the taxpayers, but we do have to worry about what Hartford's gonna do, and I'm just saying, if we're gonna vote on that, or if we're gonna start to put together, you know, a, a budget that we all are gonna vote on, we do have to keep in the back of our minds that the potential for Hartford to mess all this up is looming large. That's all.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So are you possibly getting at, like, you know, I, I agree with you that the budget, in my opinion, would, would, I'd pass it just the way it's presented, and even if you say add the position for building and grounds, is there, you know, when you say the gloom from the state, are you saying you wanna put like a list together that you would cut in case that happened, or something like that? Is that what you're trying to get at, or, I guess I'm asking you a question, because, you know, I agree that I think we should pass it this way, so, and, and see, is that, is that something that can be done, saying, hey, if, you know?
I think you're right, I think there's, we all know that there, there needs to be some sort of contingency thinking, if something happens, we have to have a, a plan, whether we make a list, or whether that information comes to us and we sit down again and say, okay, this is a problem, and this is really some areas where we're going to have to make some adjustments. And some of them may be those positions, some of them may be capital, some of them may be other things that we haven't thought of, so.
Madam Chair, I don't.
That would be prudent to have in your mind what you wanna do.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't have a problem fully funding this, this new position with that stipulation, that, you know, if the state goes haywire, then, you know, we'll take your word and town manager's word that, you know, we're not gonna hire this individual, but I, I, if somebody makes a motion, I would definitely support fully funding.
Okay.
This position.
So.
Well, if you wanna dispense with this particular department, I will make a motion right now.
Do it.
Okay. Madam Chair? I move we fund Department one thirty-six finance in the amount of two hundred and six thousand four hundred and two dollars.
A motion in a second, any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Clarification.
I wasn't rushing anybody through this.
I think it was.
We're in agreement, right?
We could talk about it all night, you're right.
Nope, that's fine, and we all understand the concerns that we had with a new position here. If there are no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next one I have on my list is E seven. Okay, that's the Public Works Department. And as, as I recall, the only question we had was in regard to a position that Dave Emery asked us to reinstit, put back into this budget, it was eliminated. Robert, this, do you have the total amount that that is, or should we just use this forty-three eight hundred number that you have in there?
Rob, is it the difference between the department request and the manager request, or is it, or is it, is it that simple? Which is a little bit more than?
It's a little bit more than that.
Because it would be, it would be the HVAC position at step one.
At step one, correct, yes, I see.
We don't have the number in the letter from Dave.
It's not in there.
Let's talk about it a little.
I, I really don't think we should put that position back in there.
Okay.
I, I really don't, I'm opposed to that.
How about half a year? Half a year, Deb?
I don't even know what half a year is for yet, do we? Do we have a figure for that?
It's gonna be around twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's about fifty thousand.
So twenty-five grand, yeah. It's been over two years, it's been even more than that, right? Three, it hasn't been two and a half, three years that that position hasn't been filled?
It happened during snow plowing operations two years ago, not last winter, but the winter before.
But we're spending the money anyway, right? We're spending it on other contractual instead of on, right?
The, it's buildings and grounds, I don't think we, we spend it on other contractual, no.
They do other stuff there besides snow plowing. Right, he, this is a.
Right.
Full year, did all kinds of things.
Well, he did the HVAC.
Yep.
The accident happened.
Would this, is it possible the new hire would come in at a lower rate than the person that had been in there, is that person been in there for some time, or is it?
It is the lower rate.
That is, okay.
Because it's, because it's a, you know, a higher caliber person, it's fifty thousand, if it was a laborer, it'd probably be in the forty thousand range.
Now, was the previous person a licensed HVAC? He said this position does not have to be licensed HVAC? The other, from my notes from Monday night.
Does not have to be licensed.
I don't think he said he needed that.
He was not either, okay, yeah, just wanted to know if it was the same.
Yeah, it didn't have to be.
Did not have to be.
That's what Dave said.
Okay, so I'm just curious as to whether the previous person was.
But, Madam Chair, also, as Dave indicated, I mean, overtime has gone up because of this individual not being there. These are just his, his email to Robert Lee.
Yeah, I'll do half a year, if you want to do half a year, half a year, yeah.
Just to clarify, when you mean half a year, is that just we hire them halfway through the fiscal year, is that how it works?
That's what I, that's what I meant when I said half a year, that you just, you fund half of it January first through the end of the fiscal year, but understanding that you're gonna have to fund the other half, the following fiscal year.
Yeah, we don't wanna hire somebody then.
Yeah, you're not gonna hire them six months and say, oh, you can work another six months.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Chris, I'm sorry, can you explain that, I, I don't understand half a year.
You're essentially adding the position, but what we're, what we would do is next year, next fiscal year, is say, we are only gonna fund it for six months of the twelve months. So we would fill the position, but we would wait until January first with the understanding that going forward, we'd have to budget the full fifty thousand every year, not just twenty-five for next year. So the theory, we'd add twenty-five thousand to next year's budget, and then another twenty-five, the following fiscal, fiscal year's budget, to complete the full time hire. Is that helpful?
I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean.
More helpful than not having the position.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, like you said, it's been a couple of years.
And before we actually vote on this, is there any way to quantify this? Because I know Dave did mention that there's overtime clause, that there, and I don't know, is there, I know we have some time before we meet again, but is there any way for him to put some numbers behind what he feels it costs not having this position filled?
To a, to a certain degree, yes.
And I know it's.
The issue is, is we're not gonna be able to maintain the equipment at, you know.
Correct.
Level, you know, we may go longer periods of time to do certain items, and, you know, what, what is, what is the impact, is it not gonna be on breakdowns, you know, replacing the equipment?
There's a lot of gray in that.
I think I remember him saying, you know, he, he, he did mention that, you know, the other contractual would start to go up because he's hiring outside contractors to.
Right, right, because they bring someone in.
Yeah, to fix it.
That's gonna be based on something breaking down, you know, is that because?
No, I understand, I mean, but there's gotta be a way like, you know, where it's, you know, fifty bucks an hour to bring someone in and we, you know.
I think it depends on what the equipment is that needs.
I guess maybe what I'm trying, maybe what I'm trying to get at is to picture, you know, does that mean bringing someone? does that mean bringing someone for two hours a week has to come in and fix stuff? Is that that break-even point? Or, you know, with overtime, is it, you know, I don't know if there's a way to do that, but-
Well, the HVAC people do a lot of preventive maintenance.
Correct. Yeah, so I, yeah, I know, I'm probably asking him that, he really can't.
It's tough. I mean, I certainly can ask him, I'm not sure that he's going to be able to scientifically tell you.
I understand, I just-
It'd be, you know, his opinion and, you know, for what, you know, for what that's worth, I certainly can ask him to do that.
No, because even in the letter, he, the final paragraph, he refers to a lot of intangibles, but he puts, he seems to put a lot of value on those intangibles.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm definitely fine with the half a year, if that's the way, I mean, that's fine with me.
Okay.
And understanding that the position's going to stay there, of course.
Right, okay. Okay, so...
If you're going to do that, you'd add 50, 25,000 to the 977.
It would be $1,266,000, 6, $1,2,660.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 310 Buildings and Grounds in the amount of $1,2,660.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Will it relay this to Dave that we're funding the position for half a year? That's how, his half a year, whatever his half a year is? I don't know if it's October to June, I don't know.
And I'd just like to add, the same caveat, maybe, is that, you know, the state does decide to pull back $30,000 on those things.
Exactly.
Circumstances, right.
Yeah, I agree.
But, yeah. Can't be part of our vote, per se, but like, I guess we can use the pressure memo that we're on record.
We're putting the list together. Two items on the list so far.
We're on record, it'll be on, it'll be on tape.
Scott's going to get it down, he's got the list.
Can we vote?
All right.
We have not voted yet.
Any other comments? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next one on my list is F7, solid waste.
This one, is this the one that had to do with, we had to okay the CWPM?
Yeah, that's trying to do with the offer.
This is not a position.
You don't have to do that before this. I mean, if you, if you funded at this level, one of the ways to get there is-
Is that.
-is the offer that's been made by CWPM. I'm not sure if there's another way to get there.
Got it.
Got it.
No, I don't, I don't understand it.
No, it's the-
This proposal assumes you're going to approve the CWPM contract.
Okay. For eight years.
Yes.
So, is this proposal in this budget?
The number is in there. You have not, the proposal is not in it. That would be a separate vote during a council meeting.
That has to be, that would have to be an agenda item vote, yeah.
Yes.
Obviously, it's a contract, yeah.
Right.
But it's just implicit, yeah.
Yes. Or otherwise, you know, you take a risk, okay, let's go out the bid, let's negotiate with another contractor, you know, and-
Yeah, yeah.
So, are we putting the horse before the cart if we approve this, but not the other?
Not necessarily. I mean, if you're going to approve the CWPM contract, then no, you're not putting the car before the horse.
I mean, I'd be comfortable with, you know, funding it at this amount, but I don't know if I want to say, "Go ahead with the eight years at this point." I mean, it's, I mean, I can't do the math, but it's like $37,000 left. I mean, if we decided to go out to bid, I mean, we'd just be shy by $37,000. I mean, it could be more, like you said.
It could be significantly more, but-
So, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to make a decision on the-
The contracts don't go down over eight years. They go up.
Yeah.
To me, it's a no-brainer, but-
Yeah.
Holding the contract, you know, at the, at the amount for eight years, or, you know, is significant. I really never heard of that.
Yeah. Maybe it was too high to begin with. But, either way-
Well, let's fix it.
So, either way, I mean, I don't-
It wasn't high to begin with, but...
The, so, I would definitely like to fund it at the number that they're using, but I'm not sure I'm ready to say okay to the eight years. I'm not saying I'm against it, but they're two different items, I guess I should say.
Yeah, I mean, we're just approving this, and then that's another discussion I have later on, so.
That's understandable.
You tell me when you want to, you know, want me to bring it up and, you know, bring Jason in and you can have a conversation with him, or give me direction on how you like.
And the contract is officially up in, I'm sorry.
Mid-September.
Mid-September.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 415 Solid Waste Management in the amount of $1,100,300.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next one I have is J19. I'm not sure I remember why we didn't approve this one, Robert, can you?
It's got to do with the, with the truck, the crane truck.
Placing the-
Utility with the crane.
Utility truck with the crane.
Which would be part of the capital anyways, right?
Well, it's off-budget, it'd be in this budget.
It'd be in this budget?
It'd be in this budget, so it would not impact your capital budget at all.
So, it's about a truck that he needed?
The improvement line item includes that cost that's in this budget.
Okay.
So, yes, it would go under the, where it says capital outlay, non-operational cost, 54,630. That number would increase by, you know, by, what was it, 80? Was it?
Right, it's not the number of 225 that he requested.
$78,000. And that would not impact your capital improvement budget.
So, they pay for it out of their budget?
Yes.
And they have the money?
Yes. I mean, yeah, they have the money, I mean, you know, it's a self-funded budget.
Right, so, why didn't you approve it?
Because there are other alternatives, they're somewhat, you know, you know, he could, Public Works could help at times when it goes down, which is not, you know, logistically, you know, and operationally, it's not the best thing to have, but, you know, and if they could not help them under those particular circumstances, they might have to hire a contractor to come out and do it. It's not a piece of equipment that's used every day.
Okay.
So, but, when you need it, you need it. And Joe expressed concern about timing. You know, if it happens in the middle of a winter storm, pump goes down, you know, you got the second pump. You're really only concerned when the second pump goes down. It happens in the springtime when water's really flowing, then, you know, you have less time to deal with an issue than you would otherwise, you know? And if he has to wait, you know, two days for a crane to show up to pull the pumps, and meanwhile, the other pump goes down, then, you know, he's up the creek. But, you know, it's taking a risk, but, you know, given the circumstances, I think there's, you know, my plan was to have it go a year, see what type of costs we incur, and be able to demonstrate, well, you know, at least in this particular year, it cost us $30,000 to, you know, have this crane service available, and so it really makes sense to buy the truck. Right now, I really don't have a sense of that.
Okay, so, and you stand by that?
Yeah, but it is taking a risk, though, but, you know, yes, I stand by it.
I mean, I kind of agree with his philosophy. I mean, I couldn't, I can't remember even when he said there, how long it took to get a crane down there the last time.
Last time, it happened in the afternoon, and he didn't get one until the next morning.
That's what it was. So, it was 24 hours, like you said, that you could have a problem if the second pump goes down.
Yeah. He said he was sweating it, but it was, it ended up being fine. All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move we fund Department 340 Water Pollution Control Facility in the amount of $1,735,597.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any-
I'm sorry, do I have the wrong page?
I think that, isn't it 3 million? Isn't it 3 million?
I'm sorry, I read the wrong column.
Okay, yeah.
Isn't it 3 million?
I'm sorry.
He'd be a little upset if that was in the-
All right, I retract that motion. I move that we fund-
So, what's the-
Department 340 Water Pollution Control Facility in the amount of $3,365,246.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Boy, if we did it for Adam, I would have been half a truck.
And the next one is our capital. Did we miss any, or did we cover them all, Rob?
We didn't do Board of Ed.
Board of Ed and capital.
And capital. All right, so, right, capital list.
What do we do, G4?
H8. Okay.
What are we, what are we doing?
I'm sorry?
We're doing capital or Board of Ed?
Capital, aren't we?
Do we do the capital first?
Whatever you want to do.
Doesn't really matter.
H8, you want to go too? That's fine.
H what?
H8.
Go ahead.
Enter fund transfers.
This is where our list gets a little longer this time, or how we're going to do it? Do we want to? How was the building?
If you were to approve the budget as proposed, there'd be two motions. One would be a total appropriation of $2,205,378, and then the, you know, later on, in the transfers is where you'd get the 1.1 in there. So, at this point in time, what would be under consideration is 2,205,378. Which is the total capital approval budget.
Do we need this backhoe in here, this 115? I'm asking, I'm just asking a question.
Excuse me?
This, the backhoe?
Right.
The loader backhoe? Are we keeping that in there, or are we talking about taking it out?
So, whatever you want to do. I have, my thinking is that we're going to, my proposals, we treat the capitals, we did everything else. We can identify some areas or some items that may be a concern for us down the road if we get into trouble with the state funding. And we can either identify those items now, we can wait until everything, we see where we are. We may have to come back and look at this again, if that's all right with everybody else, to look at some items that we may have to ask some changes to be made.
And I would deliberately, if you did approve it at this level, I would deliberately take the loader backhoe and put that on the list that Scott's maintaining and, until the, until the-
Yep.
Until the state budget is completed.
Okay. Do you want us to-
And the council approves.
Would you like us to do a list now, in the outset?
Well, if you want to add anything else, that's fine. I'm just saying, for that one, I would, I would, you know-
Yep, put that on the list. What does everybody else think?
I tend to agree, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
You want to identify any others, that's fine, too, you know.
I have some that I thought we could talk about, or try to figure out here. Some of it is under the Board of Education side. They have a, their total request is over 300, what did Maureen say, 3?
387.
387. So, that's a, you know, fairly big amount. We just got all of these spreadsheets regarding the technology in the Chromebook program that they gave us. I would propose that, on the table for consideration would be the Chromebooks, administrative laptops, and the teacher laptop replacement.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I think I agree. I don't know if it, you know, later on, I would definitely say, I don't think I would say zero to those three items, you know, if something happened, because they did, you know, looking on here, when you see a computer that's nine years old, I'm pretty impressed that it's still running. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about that. So, I guess what I would say is that, you know, I don't think we would have to, I don't think we should slash them 100%, no matter what.
Well, I think, what I think's being suggested is that's what we might call the watch list.
Yeah.
Right.
And that, at some point in time before the purchase goes out, the council will authorize the amount of dollars, whether that's zero, don't purchase anything-
50%.
Or whether it's a portion of that, as you're suggesting, Danny.
I agree. That's perfect.
I have to say, though, Kevin and his team do a really good job stretching the life out of that equipment.
You know, I'm not a computer person, but nine years sounds like a long time.
Now, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a question, you know, and maybe we need to ask the board this, you know, I imagine that they would purchase these items quickly, once the new fiscal year started. Ideally, they'd want them for the next school year, which I imagine there's a pretty decent lead time to even get anything new equipment-wise. You know, I'm just thinking, you know, potentially, you know, if by July 1st, the state hasn't figured out what they want to do, and the board really has to make a decision, yes or no, going forward with the purchase of some of these things to have them for the new school year, does that-
Well, you'll have to take, you'll have to make that decision.
Okay, okay.
They may still have, and I don't know, they may have some in reserve that they can actually roll out, you know, I know that they do extras.
I guess what I'm saying is, maybe we need to follow up with the board just to have this conversation. If it's very one-sided right now, it's easy for us to say, oh-
Right, yeah.
But, you know, just so that, you know, like we've done with, you know, the finance director, and, you know, and understanding the whole picture, and not just, oh, we're not going to let you buy those July 1st, there's no state budget.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is that, you know, they're not going to do anything before April 25th.
Correct.
You know, because they're not, you know, until it gets authorized, and then, you know, so, so I think between now and, you know, next week, you can-
Right, and we do have some time, yes. Right, and we do have some time, yes.
And if you decide that state budget's not in place, but according to what they've described to you, we got a chance to buy it now, we get a discount now, and then it's in place by, you know, September 1st, which is our last week in August, which is the first day of school. Otherwise, we miss, you know, we miss the opportunity, might as well push it back a year. You may turn around and say, well, even though the state budget's not in place, we authorize you for you to go ahead.
Okay.
Because it's been authorized as part of the budget, assuming it gets passed on the 25th.
Sounds like a fairly good call out there.
The Board of Ed may have other ideas as to some of their capital that they think might be, be able to be swapped out.
Traded.
Next year or the following year, I don't know.
Whereas the Chromebook may be really something, especially with the testing, that's a huge piece of this. And getting the kids used to them and able to use them when the testing period comes around.
Is there anything else? Does anybody have any other thoughts about some of the capital requests outside of the Board of Education? We have the data processing, police, fire, roadways, buildings and grounds.
Certainly, you're not going to spend the $20,000 on the plan of conservation and development, so we just wouldn't put it away.
I'm sorry, what was that, Robert?
Under Economic Community Development Department, number four. That's $20,000, that's, you're saving that up to do, you know?
Yep.
I know it's, I know he's, I think he planned on spending some dollars next year in there.
Yeah, I think it was like 7,500 perhaps.
All right.
But the majority of it would have hit in 2019.
You know, yeah, so maybe that's not a good idea.
The revale, I mean, it said 50,000.
But isn't that supposed to cover, to finish this revale?
Part of it is, yeah.
Yeah, so I, um. Yeah, do you want to hold back the purchase of the police cruisers till you get, till you know that, one way or the other?
So this is funding for three? These are three?
You want to hold back one of them until you know where the budget's going, so we buy two, you know, if you need to cut something that's some of your backup plan? I don't know, you know, it's not, we're not talking a lot of money here, but, you know.
I mean, I feel like we did pretty good with the, in my opinion, you know, if we just put the backhoe and the, you know, some of that technology in the Board of Ed, I don't know if I, I guess, like you said, we've already done two cruisers for, I don't know how many years now, that we said we were going to do two, then three, then two, then three, and the last, whatever it was, three or four years, we only did two? Is that what it was? Two years? I don't know if that's the best idea.
Well, if the question is what projects you want to hold back, you don't need to make that decision tonight. If you're going to fund the full amount and then decide later, you know, after we get some information from the Board of Education and identify some projects, we still have time to do that. It isn't as if if you do two. First off, it's not going to be voted on until April. We certainly will come back to the council and say, okay, the budget's approved, these are the projects we'd like to go forward with now, and get authorization from you. So you don't need to make that decision tonight.
Right, yeah.
So the decision is the bottom line.
I have to say that I'm uncomfortable putting the technology pieces quote-unquote on the list at this point, you know, I mean, you know, we had some very specific things, such as the backhoe and the other things that we just did earlier, but to me, that's like just a little too vague to put it on the list, because we really don't know the specific thing that we would be talking about reducing.
Well, would you consider doing a portion of that, just to help out?
But I'd want to, I'd want to talk to the Board of Education first, you know, before I think it's on the list. And we realize the list is not, is not something that we're voting on, we're not voting on, it's hard and fast, you know?
It's not, you know, definitive that we're definitely going to do this. Those are just some items that I identified, because I don't know if they can put a pause on there for one year, pause it for one year, and not have any detrimental effects, knowing that they can, they can pick it up. They've been funding their technology at a very high level for several years, and I understand that's their plan, and that's the plan for their system and their mission and all of that, and so I don't know if there was a pause for either some of that, or a portion of it, or the whole thing, if that would really be significant for them, or if that's something they could work around and deal with.
And we may have to ask questions about other things, too, at some point, too. So, I mean, you know, any place in the budget. And I realize the list is not something we're voting on per se either today, you know. We're voting on the amounts tonight, yeah. But just wanted to say that.
Okay, so would, are you in agreement that we can put the, identify these items on a list, but we will confirm with the Board of Education before any action is taken at some point in the future?
Yes, I am comfortable that it would be further consultation with the Board of Ed.
Okay.
We have that as well.
Okay. All right, so, do we want to vote? Do we want to approve the capital as is, with the understanding that there may be some changes? Is that what the council wants to do tonight?
I think so.
Yes.
Madam Chair? I guess I'll make a motion then. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve 840 interfund transfers out, capital in the amount of $2,205,378.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wrong number?
The capital plan itself, Department 840 is not that dollar. 840, the capital piece of it is 1.1 million.
1.1, right?
Right, but that's on transfers.
Robert said to do it separately.
I'm saying it's not 840, it's the capital plan per se.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So the 1.1 million is what we need to approve?
Well, for the capital side of the 840 budget, but then you have the library and the senior center and recreation, so the total of 840 is 1,877,212.
Right here.
Okay. Yeah. H-12? Okay, 1.8.
Okay, right here.
1,877,212. For 840. Okay, so I will amend, we didn't vote, did we?
No.
All right, so I will amend my motion to approve 840, Department 840 in the amount of $1,877,212.
Second. And I have a second? Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Rob, they have to approve a capital improvement budget, not 840, but a capital improvement budget of $2,205,378.
Which we just did, we did that prior.
As long as, as long as you know that that was a capital improvement budget, okay. All right. As long as everybody's on the same page, or close to the same page.
Okay.
You sure? I don't care, as long as you're sure we got it right.
There's other sources of revenue.
All right.
All right. I have on my list transfers out, is that something else we need to do, or is that it? We just did 1,008, 1.8 million, okay. Do we have any others?
Board of Ed.
Board of Ed.
Why do I always forget them?
The largest line item in the list.
However, does that happen?
The largest line item in the list.
I did, and they were at the top of my list, and I kept ignoring it.
We won't let you forget ours.
I kept forgetting it. I-7?
Yeah, it's I-7.
I-7.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to fund, what is their department, 910? Board of Education in the amount of $37,430,527. Is that the right?
Yes, that's right, yeah. That includes the state teacher retirement.
Yeah, that's not right.
I amend that motion. I apologize. It's going to be $35,503,096.
Second.
$99. 99.
The paper says 96.
It says 96.
Yeah, but on this page, right? You've got to go on that page.
$99.
Oh, I see, oh, okay.
Second.
That was a tough one.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're done. Is there more to do for us?
Can we do a total budget number, Rob, or you?
We've done, yes.
Like, is that something we want to do right now, and we don't need to meet then again?
Correct.
You mean, we never have to meet again?
By the way, Rob, is it possible for you to reconcile the original page one and page, where is it? The revenue and the expenditures from the transmittal section? And take away the teacher's retirement? Because it's too confusing. The revenue doesn't jive with it, it all looks like.
We will take the teacher's retirement out.
Okay.
For ease of simplicity, I'll probably leave it in there and just put zeros.
And while you're doing that, can we talk for a second about why do we need the $200,000 in there from fund balance? Do we still need the $200,000 in there from fund balance?
Well, that's revenue. I mean, that's, when you go to, when you go to set the mill rate, that's when you'll decide how much.
No, I know that, but I'm saying with the increase in the, with the increase in the grand list, we don't need that anymore, do we?
The increase in the grand list was.
It's $87,000.
Was minimal.
I know, but with the increase in the grand list, if you look at, if you look at the revenue, it seems to me we don't need that anymore. Do we need the $200,000, according to you?
Well, the mill rate, the mill rate increase, that 200,000 is, is one, one.
Point one-four mill.
Point one-four mills. So we'd have to increase the, you know, that would increase the proposed mill rate by point one-four mills.
I think we're better off leaving it in there right now. Because at the end of the year, if we don't need it, it doesn't get used, right? Correct?
Right, right. And we probably, our revenues for the current fiscal year, we probably won't use that 200,000, which is, I think, the point you're making.
Right.
In the current fiscal year, we probably won't use the 200,000.
Right.
But.
So if we don't use it this year, why would we use it next year?
Well, you'd have to up another revenue, you know, to balance off the loss of the 200,000.
You have to bring up the mill rate to offset that 200,000, and then you take a chance.
Or raise back taxes by 200,000, or raise.
If we don't use it this year, why would we use it next year?
Because on paper, you have to balance your budget.
Yeah, we have to balance our budget on paper.
All right, maybe I'm not making my point wrong. Sorry, let it go.
Possibility that we don't.
You put money in your budget every year and you don't use it, you don't have to keep putting it there.
No, it's a revenue. It's a revenue in our budget.
This is a budget estimate. You're estimating that you're going to need $200,000 to balance it. If you don't need it, then in order to balance your budget, you got to, you've got to count for it somewhere else.
Right, but you're counting on money from unassigned fund balance.
Right.
I'm simply saying it's sort of a mental thing to not count on it.
But if we cut it from the revenue side?
Then we don't have it, too.
Would we have to cut it from?
Either cut it from the expenditure side, or add it something else, or more on the revenue side.
It, I know, but it's a crutch. I'm just saying I want to remove the crutch. But if you guys don't care, it's all right.
I'd prefer to leave, I'd prefer to leave it for now.
Okay.
Your overall budget number is broken down by.
Government. Yep.
Okay, so the total general government budget is $23,022,95. Increase of $203,999.
Say that number again, please.
$203,999, or 0.89%. Board of Ed budget, $35,503,99. Increase of $678,732, or 1.95%. Total budget, $58,525,194. Increase of $882, I'm sorry, $882,731, or 1.53%.
So for the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Want to do the proposed mill rate or no?
I would say no, because we have, you know, we have, you know, we have car tax, you know, CAF and those kinds of things, and I would just say the average taxes will go up, you know, a certain percentage, you know? Well, because it's a revalue, it's probably better that we just, you know, put it into the, into the spreadsheet on the real estate taxes. Because we don't do a spreadsheet on the car taxes. Because it's going to be different for everybody.
I get a motion for those two, and.
Now, we've done the Board of Ed. So we just need the town side in the total?
I'm not even sure you need the total, because you're voting on the two of them.
I know, I, okay, just the town side. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion to fund the town side at $23,022,95.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it?
We finished, yeah.
That was fun. It's not as exciting.
It's a great budget.
No, we'll do this one, we don't know about that.
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor? Thanks very much, everybody.